And then that way I can get in on the minutes, okay? Don't let anybody jump.
Anybody go first, raise your hand, go ahead.
Catlin Rice. I guess I'm here to get a little bit of clarification on the no truck routes. Seen the signs posted a couple of days ago, we're just north of town here, we haul livestock. We're not, we come through here empty both ways that we go. And we're too long to come to the end of seven hundred and turn left and go out. And those trees are like nine foot to try to get underneath. Trying to figure, I was told that it wasn't necessarily just to keep out of town trucks away, that it was across the board, local trucks. That loads are the only ones that are gonna be able to get their grain bins down here.
Farming.
Any farming stuff.
It's farm, it's any farm.
Any commercial license plate will be.
So me being commercial, even though I'm hauling agriculture, I can't get through there.
Part of most of the reason, which I'll be the bad guy. The curbs are busted. The water meter's been busted, the water hydrant's been busted, the utility bolt's been broke off. There's no curbs on that corner coming into town on the north and south side. The sides of the road are forged in, flooding the neighbor down by the bridge. They got water issues every time it rains.
That direction?
South or north. The little wooden house I think it is.
On seven hundred.
So the water comes down Madison, runs off the road right there on the curve and runs right down towards the house and with the basement. So we got a project, we're trying to get a new curb there. And there's no way truck traffic is not running over that curb. I've never seen a semi yet that can make that curb into town without driving over the curves.
Well, we're not gonna make the curb go the other way either.
As I say, coming in the other way is gonna be a lot worse than that, there's gonna be all kinds of stuff, that total house and the.
I know, but I'm just saying, that's in town if you're going that way. I mean, we can't put new curbs in and then they get busted and, I mean, it's three hundred thousand dollars for drain boxes and curbs and repaving. But we're not gonna do that.
There's not a way to put a truck friendly curbs in or put some kind of drainage.
Through Roger Aardt for like new core trucks, but it's still not gonna get that kind of use, so. Six, eight inch curb, three feet deep, but you know, that's gonna get new drive trucks on it. It's just gonna shovel right down the mud. So we'll move the fence back, move that like wider on that side. But the curbs on the south side where the bacon house is, their yard gets run it up. Like I said, on the north side, they used to be totally cold, water hydrant. That big rock is a water meter pit and all that's been down since then for. I mean, it's here that or have a place sit there and stop every semi that drives off the curb and side and put property down. It's easier for us to put these signs down.
So every one of these incidents has been caused by a commercial vehicle, not a farm vehicle.
It's always, well, I don't know. I don't know, Catlin, we get so much traffic from Lafayette.
I get it, I get trying to keep the fifty-three foot van trailers and the people have no idea, but I mean, I run a lot of money through this town too. I've got my guys, don't run Jake brakes, we try to be as respectful as we can.
But look at it, it's, I mean, if we need to trim a tree, we can, but the curbs can't be, they can't be any tighter.
And it's gonna get somebody hurt too, because you come off forty-seven if you're not from the area and you turn the street. Now you see the sign before you've already turned on it, what you gonna do, back out on forty-seven?
Well.
Or do you take the tip?
We're gonna allow two months window for trucks to get used to that. I mean, we're not gonna stop every truck in the next two months, so you might get pulled over in a month, say, you know. Here's your warning, but you're not gonna get a twenty-five hundred dollar fine right off the get-go. I mean.
There were seven commercial trucks in thirty minutes that Kevin pulled over this morning. I mean, just to give you an idea of where, how trafficked it is.
Commercial trucks bring everything to Palmer's Hardware that sells it, everything up there, the Darlington gas station.
They can deliver.
I'll just use that question one, they run four trucks, maybe five all day long, so probably four or five trips a day. Nine, four, so that's twenty trucks that come through town and are running that road. There's pedic, double axle or duffel trailer trucks or just all kinds of stuff that run up through there. I mean, it's just trash that holds the tree down there.
Well, I'm welcome, or I'm, I'm for me to get up there with a semi to where you can actually see it, because everything's not changed the same. I mean, we can make the way going out of town possible from a semi is one thing, but it's not right now.
I guess if we rebuild that curb, it's gonna be as tight as it is now. Are you gonna be able to still make it without driving over that curb?
Now, I don't run over a curb now, it's tires are seven hundred dollars a piece, I don't wanna lose my tires.
I don't know, I don't know how you can make it into town and you can't make it that way.
Because the, the stop sign, everything's there, then you're gonna be driving, you're gonna have the exact opposite problem, the ladies, I don't know, I'm not gonna say lady, but the people. Southeast that corner, their mailbox, they all do field rocks, like they get far enough over and be able to turn that, those spreads, they just cut so short. I mean.
I mean, that rock, that big rocky, they drove it to the bank. That's had to been driven back down, but we've, we've basically moved that, then where they blocked our each feet to the north to. Hopefully give you more turn here. I don't know what the answer is, it's just a terrible turn for big trucks. But I know our town can't, can't sustain it, here's a, uh, storm drainage culvert. That got busted and caved in and this was looking underneath the center of the street, it's eight feet. So I don't know how long that sixteen inch.
Say, how long's that culvert been there? I mean, he'll find a lot of that.
If people roll tracks, trucks through town, you know, that ain't gonna last another hundred years. And I don't know, I mean, this is the stuff I gotta deal with. And I don't know how to, I say not prevent it, but prolong it.
And we did three years ago, Roger Azar did a study for us to wipe Main Street.
Yeah, okay.
Even go down there, wipe that whole four-way, come down, wipe Main Street, go all the way to six twenty-five, three point two million dollars. And that was taking people, that was taking all the way up to the sidewalk, obviously, and taking people's property.
Sidewalk, the sidewalk.
Yeah. So we had to go to plan B.
I get that, but still, what's gonna, I've never hauled unloaded, whether it's a farm plate or not, they're coming through there ninety thousand pounds or, just because they got a farm plate, they're paying. I pay twenty-two nineties, I pay way more expensive plates.
I know, but.
I pay all that stuff extra.
You're not saying you don't.
And then I still don't get to drive on it, but the guy that doesn't pay that does.
I'm just saying, what's the town supposed to do?
I guess let me keep going in the dumpster, because we're gonna run everybody out of town.
So if the street caves in and nobody can drive on it, then.
I guess we need to start filing the greens to get state money in there.
I don't know, I'm, I mean, I'm in the same boat.
I'm not saying you don't need to change it, but we can't just throw up random no truck signs without the proper way to get them out of here.
Well, I mean, we thought going that way, it was no different to coming into town.
Until the trees are gone, you can't. Because two trucks, two trucks can not pass.
We can trim some trees on.
I mean, that, that's a way on six eighty out, going my way.
And I didn't.
Make it over there, the lane, or run the trees sticking out there on any truck.
I didn't take a truck down there and try to pave, because there's a lot of traffic, but I'm about ninety-five percent sure you're not gonna take a Peterbilt and a livestock trailer around that corner.
Yeah, I don't know, I'm, I just, I don't know.
I think if you're gonna make it no commercial trucks, needs to be no farm trucks across the board.
Well, then you can't keep loads off of, how you gonna.
I know.
How can you keep him from going to his business, you're going home.
They can't go home, they just can't come rain in the Madison. How do you go down without the road or you don't, but you know, all the rest of the county roads.
Pretty cop I've ever talked to says agriculture's agriculture exempt, it doesn't matter whether it's a farm plate or not, like you're on it. I mean, I, I talked to Jake Bowe in there today, four hundred, or excuse me, less than two thirty-one, there's no trucks, but we have all farms out there we go to. We go to AMBC, that's no trucks. I mean, we're, we're going to farms to collect livestock to take, you know what I mean, we're not.
So ask these guys if they wanna exempt you.
So if, if we got the trees cut back, is it, I mean, is that the whole, right now, you can't, you're saying you can't make the left-hand turn?
There's no way, even if you guys trim that.
How can you make the right-hand turn but not the left? Well, you know how that asphalt's like clear up, we gotta clear the left side of the road to make that turn. We don't come up to the side where, took their side or stop sign and just turn right, that paint cutout over there, we lay clear over there. And you can come right around there, not hit that guy, hit any curb bike. I personally can, I'm not gonna speak for the rest of the population. But I get where you guys are coming from and not want to tore up, but right now, until I take a truck down and try, I didn't do it today, because I went my pickup truck first to see how low the trees were. I was like, well, I'm gonna just wipe all the lights off my truck, there's no point trying. But I'm pretty comfortable to say you're not gonna take a fifty-three foot trailer down that corner.
So with even trim, you're saying with trimming trees, doing, you don't, you can't, are you talking, you can't make going home or you can't make leaving? Because going home, I would think you could make.
Well, either way, you're gonna be turning around, I think that stop sign's gonna have to be moved back.
So if we move.
And then my, my box are gonna have to be moved.
I'm asking you, because you drive through there as much as anybody, we have to, we need to keep the trucks off the town streets. What, what will it take? And I can't, I'm not sitting here promising you that we can make everything happen that you tell us, but what needs to happen on that corner? Does the, does the stop say, sign need to go back towards the, towards the lift station? And have a little bit of gravel area there, get rid of that curb? Because I will tell you also, we have a homeowner that's, I forget who, I forget which, I know which house it is, but I'm trying to think. It's not the corner, it's not where the clap.
That's the one right behind it. Brian was interested in that one.
Is sent in a thing that because there's not enough curbs, all the waters running off, so they're asking us about that too. So we have to think about the water runoff.
Their mailboxes are across the white line.
Yeah. So, but, but I'm just saying that the water's running down there and around that and going right down in their yard. So we have to think about curbs and water runoff, so we have to think about all of it. We need to keep the trucks off the town streets and we're not trying to put anybody in a bad position or make anybody's life harder. So if we need to pull a curb there and push gravel in the corner of the toll house where you could make that turn, I, then we'll entertain that, we would entertain that doing that.
I think it's gonna be real hard for a semi to get, make that blind turn back if you're going towards Crawfordsville, after you get out there with that angle on forty-seven, trying to look across the semi and back that way. I think you'll have some accidents out there too.
That's layers of house, I think, but, but they're pretty hard.
But I'm not saying it's not doable.
But our streets are collapsing, so what is your, what do you say we do?
Are they collapsing from a truck?
That's the catch twenty-seven years, we have, we have to reroute, you know, farm trucks I get, you know, but the constant, what we're saying is the constant day-to-day, these streets aren't built for that. A lot of the county roads aren't built for that, but it's happening because GPS, they take them this way, we go this way, they just do what they wanna do. No trucks, they go ahead and do it, they do it on New Core Road, my family deals with it on south of New, or south of Crawfordsville. But the thing is, is that what do you want us to do? Road collapses, who's gonna fix it? It's up to us to try and fix that. So, I mean, I understand where you guys are coming from, but we've got to do something.
I think that my point too is, is, do you, even if you're Maryland, you've driven bus, do you know what the bus weighs, empty? Off the top of your head, I was talking about that, I know that seemed like a really random question.
Me?
Yeah.
Okay.
Then you used to drive a bus?
Yeah, I used to drive, yeah, for thirty years.
I mean, a bus weighs twenty-two, twenty-three thousand pounds then.
I can, I can, I can answer that question.
Twenty-two, five.
I'm, I'm literally my semi.
And I know those curbs are hard to get and I, I used to come out on that road every night, but I had to go straight, I didn't have to turn.
All my point to you is my truck and trailer empties, it's like six thousand pounds heavier than a bus, and the spread across eighteen wheels, not six.
Yeah.
So the trash trucks are coming in here, they're no idea how much they're weighed, I mean, you're never gonna, you're never, you gotta build the infrastructure to hold a ninety thousand pound vehicle or whatever. It's not gonna, you're cheapscaping by, I don't mean that badly, but getting away from heavy traffic isn't fixing the road. You gotta put good pipes underneath there, you gotta build a good base, you gotta have a road that's gonna hold up to support traffic.
But who's gonna pay for it? I mean, we have a budget, you wanna look at it, I mean.
I get that, but guys like me, I'm running tons of money through Fountain Trust, I know they give back, I try to don't make anything around here. I'm just saying, if you're wanting to say, well, we're gonna allow agriculture to go, and believe me, I'm all for the farmer. But the farmers are coming through here loaded every single time to eighty, ninety thousand pounds, and I'm empty because I'm not hauling things through here. Where I, I would say, if you're gonna have the no truck signs, you gotta put it on forty-seven, so you don't have people turning off forty-seven, then they see the sign. And they're too scared to continue on, so they back out there and kill a family on the highway, because they didn't know they couldn't turn there. And probably need to talk to Tippecanoe County about putting something further north before someone comes down here and they can't make the corner. They go out of town either. I mean, once you get up there, both, both ends, you get up there, then you're like, now what do I do? And maybe add a truck sign that says truck route, because right now it just looks like it's no trucks and you look at it, look down that road, you're like, I'm not gonna make that.
What are you doing with the toll house? Are you gonna do anything with it?
Let me speak on the MBH money though.
Okay.
MBH is what can be dedicated to streets. So we have two hundred and eight thousand dollars in MBH and it's taken four, we're on the fifth year to get that much money there. And just to do the part that we're trying to do down here to save this guy's house, because we are responsible for that, that is under us, which Jen Jaren said, we're gonna get to that in a minute. It's over three hundred thousand, that doesn't even, now we have to face the street that he just showed you that's collapsed. I'm just letting you know money-wise, it, that's how long it takes, we barely got to patch a road. We don't collect a lot because we have Sugar Creek, Franklin and Darlington, we only get a portion of Franklin and Sugar Creek. That's how long it takes, but that is the price of it, and that doesn't include paying, paying the engineer probably, coming to three hundred. That's just the estimate of what it's gonna cost to try to fix this down here, so we don't have to replace this guy's house and foundation. I'm just telling you the numbers, because that's my part of it.
I would think there would be some state money or grant money or.
Well, I applied for community crossing.
People that go to Lafayette through here.
I applied for community crossing.
Think you could do some kind of study and figure that out and they could pay, they'd pay some money on that.
Yeah, well, no, I got it, we want it, we could match it. You have to match the grant, we don't have enough money to do it. It's a terrible system, I'm not gonna lie to you, it is. But for small towns, Tyler can attest to that, he's an attorney at several small towns in yours and city. You don't have it, you have to pick and choose, and you have to pick your priority there. You have to pick the priority where that money's gonna go, and that's the only money that you have to go into streets. And some of that's gonna get cut, so, that's, in twenty twenty-six, they're gonna cut that back. So it's, it's not, it's not a good situation whatsoever. But, I'm sorry, Bobby Demi, or for the toll house.
No, I just, I didn't know if you could take part of that corner or if they could.
Well, you got the lift station there, so it wouldn't matter.
I know it's there, but.
Yeah.
That's what, fifteen feet from the.
Yeah, I just think that we're have to, and that, so that road from the lift station out, you're saying it's county?
Yes, yeah.
So it's.
That road's not a great choice.
Oh, it's horrible, we told them, we've asked them to fix it.
So if and when these fines are given out, where does the money go?
The money will go into the law enforcement, it'll go into the court system and the, that's broke down, we will get a small portion of it, the county will get a small portion of it. It's called law enforcement education. I don't know how the court will actually break it down, they'll determine that when the fine actually comes in.
Would you be available to me tomorrow, maybe bring a truck and trailer down?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I'll try to be a help to the solution, but just shutting it down to, I, I just feel like we live in a small community and we should be about community. We've all tried to raise monies and do things around here and. I mean, I told the bank this morning, if I can't bring my trucks through here, I'm pulling all, every bank that loan I've got, I'm going to Palmer's. I'm not gonna support Palmer, I'm gonna stop supporting this community if they're not gonna support my, my business.
But it's not their fault, if they, if we don't have the money to do it.
It's not our fault.
That's not their fault.
We've already, we've been discussing this, meeting after meeting after meeting, we've brought our lawyer and we pay him to come here. We just keep discussing this and we had to make a, so we had to come up with a solution.
I think it was gonna be no trucks, it's no trucks.
Or you guys.
Legally, we can't stop farm trucks from getting to where they.
To the elevator.
Now, if there's, that's not to say if they, that's Lowe's, if somebody else comes down, they should be going the same route you would have to go. And our goal, we're not, we're not planning on writing tickets one after another. But until we figure out a better solution, that's, that's what we came up with.
Can I offer just a suggestion, if you guys, you don't know me, I'm Kent Messick, I live just, just past the town line. I see what comes down that road every day. And what I see that weighs anything, now, and since I'm not from here, I have the loyalties. Is gravel on triaxle trucks going over the speed limit. And when it goes from county to city, Larry Fiddler can feel in his house that impact. That's gotta be damaging road. And I, I'm sorry, I don't want to make anybody mad at me for speaking about gravel, but I think if there's a grain hauler, allow an exemption. That's an agriculture commodity, regardless of what vehicle it goes on. I believe the livestock is agriculture commodity. And it can be exempted as well, because it is a livestock farm-related agriculture commodity. I have seen fifty-three foot van trailers come down from the quick mark, make that turn where the, where the fellow that lives where the pine tree, it's had to cut it up higher. How they ever make that turn? But they come rumbling down five hundred into town, and it's because their GPS is telling them that is the shortcut. If we would allow an exemption for agriculture commodities, what's being hauled versus what you can't see in a van trailer? It could be bricks, it could be anything inside that van trailer. And you can tell by how they run the axles on the trailer, if they're full or if they're empty. If you could exempt the agriculture, regardless if it's a commercial truck or not, agriculture or ag, you know, that is what they're hauling is the agriculture commodity. Rest of it, these folks are, are tearing up our streets and they're speeding, they're disregarding, they laugh when they go past, it says twenty mile an hour on that utility bolt. Because we are without a marshal, even though you have one that's in town. There is so much that I see that I've quit calling in about, and you know I've called in. I quit, I give up, because I, I get laughed at, because this is the way it's always been, it's what I always hear. Nobody's doing anything different. And so when they pave that road out there, it is a beautiful road, when it was gravel, it slowed people down, they didn't wanna get chips on their car. Now it's as smooth as it can be and we're, the white lines, I think, up to another ten mile an hour. Because even the side by sides coming to get their mail are on flat out flying down through there. And I, you know, I think of, of the kids that are across my house in the, in the trailer there. There's also some children now that have moved into Bustles' son's house, there's children at the turn down there. And these people act like those children don't matter. The sign that one gentleman has that says, please slow down, there's children in there.
Kids live here.
Yeah, nobody cares, this is where we live. And we care. We need enforcement, if this ordinance goes out, we need somebody to enforce it to the degree that the word will get out. And the word will be no more trucks. But I really feel these folks that deliver the bacon, literally, need to be added to the exemption list. And that's, that's how far I go. Like I said, I'm, I'm not calling in any more complaints about speeders or anything, because I feel like nothing you can do as a town council unless we get enforcement. And I know the budget probably didn't even handle a full-time marshal or, then, I mean. I come through the downtown all the time when I go to Lafayette and I see the black car sitting out there in front of the, the town hall. But nobody in it, he's not patrolling, occasionally there'll be a siren go by and it'll be him or it'll be the fire department. But no state police, no county sheriff, I've called county sheriff a bunch of times to try to get help. Can you step up patrols, please? They're always kind to do it, I even tell them, back into my driveway and hide. Because when they go past Danny Gleason's house coming to town, no one's even looking to see if there's a cop. You can nail a bunch of people getting into Darlington. Or they can park up there, uh, by the, by the grain bins. And surely they could get two or three, get the word out, we're not gonna tolerate the speed and we're not gonna tolerate the trucks. But please exempt these folks, all the food for our, our, our country and the, the contributions they make, I think that would be a real grand gesture. And that's it for me, I'm sorry.
It's okay, don't apologize.
So you guys have exempted Lowe's to run through town, how would a commercial company do so, get an exemption to be able to do this?
We haven't, we haven't exempted Lowe's per se, like, they don't, they're not the only, but from a legal, Tyler, correct me if I'm wrong here, but from a legal side. They have a right to get to their bins in most direct route. Their, their, their property, their bins, where they keep their semis. And it's agriculture. Now, what Mr. Messick said, might have to ask Tyler to look into it, because maybe, maybe hauling hogs.
Because I am also part of the group that is out there on.
I understand that, but maybe it is.
I am a co-owner of LaFollette Trucking, so my dad and my husband, and we also have another driver that hauls livestock.
That's not the same one you or yours different or?
We're all together.
And that's, and I, we're, I tried to be on all our guys about make sure they're, you know, we got an in our hand, but five miles out, no Jake brake and don't come in here. On forty-seven running jet, we try to be as peaceful as we can through here, we really do. If anybody ever calls me, if I got a truck that's not being peaceful through here, I'll have something to say about it, you know, so. But right now, just for the meantime, until something's done out there going out the other way, it's just not really a valid option, but. This started out for me at ten thirty the other night, my truck comes back in and sees the sign and my phone's ringing in the middle of the night, what do I do?
Well, I think for now, if you're willing to do it, Catlin, is meet Brian down there and get a, get a plan, because. The ideal solution to this would be that we figure out how to let you make that turn in a safe manner where you're not messing up anything or. Getting, messing up your tires or pulling your lights off and figure out if we, and, I mean, Brian's obviously as honest as they come, if you turn out there and. He's gonna tell us that like, yeah, I've never thought of that, it's just not looking very promising. And we'll have to reevaluate, but, I mean.
What's the name of that point building that's down there?
So.
Could it be moved to the cover bridge area?
No.
Water sewer station.
That, that's the, that's gonna be the one thing that maybe, and it's not movable, obviously, for monetary reasons and, and a lot of others.
Also historic.
But if, if, well, the toll house, yes, but the, the lift station that's down there is gonna be, the toll house isn't gonna be, shouldn't be an issue either way, it's gonna be the lift station of anything. But meet Brian if you're willing to do that and so we can come up with a game plan to make, I mean, because we're not, obviously, we're not trying to make. A pain in anybody's butt, really, I mean, that's not our, that's not our goal, we still obviously want everybody to be able to get the job done and, and all that, but. We also have to think about what's going on in the roads and, and I agree with you, sir, that, but the gravel, the gravel trucks now, they're, they're not supposed to come through either. It's not just semis with trailers, I'm not saying they won't, but they're not supposed to either, they're not gonna be exempted as far as, you know, all the trucks that. Like to come through here to go to Delphi, the back way up nine hundred in Tippecanoe County to go get gravel and then come back through here, they're not gonna be exempt either.
It's these guys that are coming out of Crawfordsville. It's these guys that are coming out of Crawfordsville with their big fifty-three foot vans that are, I think they're, there's more of those than there are of any of these guys. And that's based on my observation by living there. Um, I, I'm surprised often how big a truck can come through there. They must be very skilled drivers. But I also am concerned also, no disregard to this, but we've got a postal truck that flies. He has wings on his truck. And when he comes through there, he's making a delivery, that's legit. But nobody's checking his speed. And he, he's like, I've gotta get to Lafayette, I gotta get to Lafayette, you know? And then on the return trip in the afternoon, he's, it's schools coming out, we got school buses, and here he's flying back the other way. And it's usually a, a international cab with a blue ex-Amazon body on it. That's how much I see. And again, I go, my, my desire here is enforcement. We got to send a message to these folks, we're not open for you to do whatever you want to. We've got somebody here, just like Thorntown. How many of you wanna go speed through Thorntown now?
Unfortunately, a full-time, a full-time town marshal is not in the budget at all, not even remotely close, unfortunately. And if there was a way to conjure up that, to do it, he would, but we used to have one, but the town of Darlington cannot pay for a full-time town marshal. I mean, I, I think it'd be a, I think it would be a common consensus.
But you do have the power to work with the sheriffs to encourage us being more protected.
We don't have any more power than you do.
Wish you did.
We don't, we're, we're as equal as you.
And I used to be just like you guys, I used to, just a year ago and say, why didn't we do this? Why don't we do this? Why don't we do this? Until I came here and got this position and every month I see these papers and I see, we don't have the money. We, I mean, we don't generate much income at all.
Who does our town marshal? Who's the town marshal report to?
The board.
So the board can say, I want you to go out and patrol this instead of sitting in your office.
Absolutely.
We can ask them, we can ask them on the days they're working to be more proactive.
I would, I was thinking a little more aggressive than asking, but you're a lot quieter than I am. Well, I'm, I'm just trying seriously.
We can say, hey.
Need you, need you out here, need your presence.
We've had some complaints on West Main Street about how fast people were coming in off Stockwell.
And trucks disregarding the truck.
Please.
Ordinance.
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can ask, tell, I'm saying ask, but say, this is what we need you to do or would like for you to do. And, and I, I'm sure Kevin and Shelby would both do it if we asked him, and I'd be happy to call Kevin or Shelby tonight and, and tell them that if that's what we wanna do.
I can tell you, I worked for the sheriff's department and all day today, I heard Kevin Kroll, who was on duty today for the sheriff's department, not us, as Darlington, stopped over ten people and gave them written warnings for the truck route. I'm sorry, I didn't.
No, you weren't here. I said unless they like forty minutes or something like that, it was unreal.
He was, so there is enforcement.
Do you all get a report on how many warnings and tickets get handed out?
We have a monthly log report of their activity.
Are we allowed to see that? I just, I've been across from the station for ten years and I think I've seen one person pull over. I won't let my kids ride outside on their bikes out in the road just because of.
Where, where are you at?
I'm at the post office.
Okay, okay.
So I can attest to the driver that drives a hundred because he's smoked our rod iron and I've thought about putting a, a camera out there because I'm just waiting for the next day it happens.
Are you talking about the postal worker?
And I know if I pull out behind him, I don't have to worry about being behind a slow guy, cause I can just follow him right out of town and I know he's gonna be hauling, so he's not gonna slow my morning down.
Well, I have to say, I live on Masick Street and I've seen a few pull over.
Okay, well.
I, I think he's right.
You might have somebody on Masick Street for twenty-four hours a day. They have to be.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And I can almost tell you when, I mean, I see, I see, I suppose it's the county trucks coming through at six o'clock in the morning to go out to go get stone or whatever they're gonna get, gravel. And they come right through. I mean, I live probably on one of the busiest streets there is and if you live on Main Street and go down there by the toll house, you can, they'll, they'll tell you also that is very busy with a lot of trucks and traffic. But I'm, I, I mean, I know what they're, they're, they're trying to do. We can't save our streets. And of course heavier stuff's coming all the time, you know? Few years ago, they didn't carry all that stuff. Now, I mean, and I don't want anything against truckers, my gosh, we gotta have truckers and we couldn't survive. But a lot of small towns are having the same problem. I mean, you, you go, go ask, you know, Newmarket, go ask all these people. But one thing you don't understand, Darlington in the county is the only town that does not have a state road going through it. Wayne Town has a way, road, so if that road gets bad, state's gonna take care of it. And, 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 and like Crawford's, I always think, well, how do they get those streets cleared off so good, right, in the main town? It's the state, their state highway, or their highway.
Four hundred is a Darlington address.
It is, but it is.
It is, but it's not.
But it's not under your.
And I'm just so mad because they didn't fix, when they paved all that, I call it, uh, five hundred, they didn't go out there with a cemetery and pay all that. That isn't ours, that serves. And why didn't they go out there and pave it? And that, that road is terrible. It's gonna be even worse, but that is not the town's problem. That is, that is the county, state or the county.
Can we do a no trucks, a local truck delivery only? So it keeps all the commercial people headed out the other way, but if you live around here, that, it kind of allows you to.
Tyler.
To try to deter, deter the people you're wanting to deter.
I think the ordinance is always written as local deliveries only.
It is, I read it today.
You have to, you have to put those trucks in.
We also need to get rid of the truck route signs that are out on the road that says, this second exit to Darlington. The quick mart is, in my opinion, is the first exit. Second exit is where the ice cream shop used to be and the meat market is now. That, there's a sign somewhere and there says truck route. And I don't know if it's out on the highway or if it's on this, on the city street, but I, I can remember seeing, maybe it's on the corner here at Main Street. But it says truck route. And so if, if, if that was removed, then these guys don't get the idea. That's a, that's a shortcut, you know, we can take, take that out, but.
We can enter, we can potentially entertain some of those options, but I think to, for tonight, we're not gonna probably come to agreement on what you're hoping for and what we kinda think is the right thing to do. So I think at this point, as far as the trucks go. You set up a time with Brian to meet and ideally we'll come up with a solution that lets you make that turn. And other trucks, cause you're not the only, I mean, granted, you're coming down every day, I get it, three or four or five trucks. But, and figure out how to make it work that route. If it, if for whatever reason, it just is not gonna work, if the, if the lift station's in the way or, or the neighbor, the, the carpenter's old house won't let us trim trees or whatever, something like that, then we might have to figure out something else, but for right now, I think we need to meet, you and Catlin meet with Brian and see what we can try to come up with to make it not, uh, I know it's not anyway, anyway around going that way is not gonna be ideal for you guys. I get that. But to try to make it as least pain in your butt. As we can to make it where you can make that turn both ways.
What's the curb or what, what house is getting flooded because there's not a curb?
The near, the near, the second house.
Greenhouse.
Want to sit down this wall?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's always been.
But all the water.
I was gonna say.
So you gotta change everything because of that?
They got videos of the water coming off Main Street runs down seven hundred into their drive. In Field Street. And.
Why don't they curb right there? They can need to get it, that water cut off to the open ditch somehow.
Plans is to put a curb box, a third drive, curb box around the corner on Madison. Actual plan is all curb box is all the way up to, uh, Madison, where Bart's building it. That's three hundred and some thousand dollars. Or fix, we're hoping to just put a drain that outlets into the creek. Go south to the curb box right before their drive. Build the curb all the way up around the corner and then another curb box. And that's, I don't know if we're gonna fill that, but.
And some of these drains we've been getting about crazy lately, cause I've had water run in my warehouse, it had never run in them, just because it's just a red hair in Darlington, it's been a piss.
Even the house on the opposite corner that sits up on the hill right there, you know, and it has the, the great big house, the two-story sits right on the corner. We've got the brick house over here, the two-story, and then you've got the one that has the rock on the corner. Two-story curb is completely gone. The sidewalk is completely smashed down. And she has fixed that retention wall three times because it's been hit. And she came and she's like, I'm done. I am done with these trucks coming over into my property. And she said, I don't care about the sidewalk, you can take it out. I don't care if I have to have, she asked, cause she had the house, cause she said they come so far out that they are right at her wall. And she brought pictures and stuff. I mean, I'm just telling you another place.
But getting bigger.
Yeah, it's just, she's like, I'm just done, I'm done. I paid so much money to get my property there.
That's right there, they're fighting against each other. I gotta put that rock player out there, then you gotta go more.
Water coming, need a rock there because the water's fire hunting there.
Silence your phone, you know better.
I know, right?
I know all of y'all are like, hey, we're doing, I, I can totally understand what you're saying about not being on that side of it and stuff. And I, I mean, I think everybody in here wants it to be the best for the people's house and for him driving and then, and I mean, I, I, I can really appreciate what you're doing. I, I do think the gentleman down here is totally right because who's writing those tickets right now, word's out now, but then in six months, eight months, nine months. Who controls that? And it's not, if we can't get people to slow down. Now, I come a couple of times a year to these and it seems always be the topic of speaking gets brought up. And it's like, I feel like we need to figure out a way, how do we get the word out, kinda like Thorntown, like don't, don't drive through here, you're not supposed to, don't speed and all that.
Start writing tickets instead of giving warnings.
Right, and, and I know he can only be, I mean, I, I get to look out my re, window and see when he's on duty and that sort of stuff. I know the funds are limited, but I, I don't know if there's something we can do if, I don't know if you can have volunteer truck, you can't really do that, I'm sure. Or you can do, can they do, can we do camera tickets or some way that really gets no cameras for tickets? Cause I think in six months, eight months, like what happens when that three hundred thousand gets flushed down the drain and gets destroyed? Because everybody's like, okay, they're not paying attention anymore, nobody's gonna run me a ticket. And then they just run over those curbs and then this money's just down the drain. Is my concern too. And I know you can't, nobody can prevent everything. But that's just kinda my long-term thinking of what's gonna happen.
I pulled the green.
I'm sure y'all follow that too.
I pull out of my driveway and I look both ways twice. And there's always somebody on my tail going west. And I pull the gray hair thing, you get on my tail, I'm just dropping the speed a little bit lower. They can't pass me. But is that the right thing to do? I'm taking my own vehicle and my own life in hand by being an obstetral man. Yeah, I, I just don't feel like that's necessary.
I guess the other part to it, if they were out here so heavy doing this to get the word out, like is there a way we can try to get that, like, couple ti, like a couple times a month, like, hey, you guys come out here and really pound warnings and tickets, like.
I can, uh.
You know, I mean, just where it's like, hey, they're doing like a couple times here and there, people really think twice.
Alcohol check, sheriff.
I'm very willing to, um, since I'm the liaison with our department. I've already made some notes about speed and the postal worker and things like that to, to propose picking a day, a month where you can do a speed blitz. What you're gonna do is traffic. I would propose that to them. That's starting.
Yeah, I get it.
Barring any emergency. Now, if it's an emergency, obviously, I want him to break away, but have his priority pass that, obviously ask them to see what we can do.
Maybe a side benefit will help, uh, those folks that are late in the kids to school. You'd be surprised how many bodies fly down through there too. Well, need to say it, but not a benefit.
Yeah, I guess. I'll call you tomorrow. I guess I would just close with saying I'll try to help what I can to figure out a way to do it, but at the end of it, if we can't figure it out, we do continue the no truck thing. In my opinion, it's not gonna matter, there's a farm plate or a commercial plate, pounds per square inches, pounds per square inch. I just want everybody to be held to the same rule that I'm held to now. So.
Now, can you slide your back axle?
No, they're spread.
No, we're spread, they're fixed spread.
Well, you said a box, you were talking about other trailers, box frames.
We would come closer to getting the road wider going east than we would going west, just because it's flat. We don't gotta deal with them. At that corner to the bridge, it's wide, as opposed to that deal with the drainage.
I really think that corner angling roads is a problem, or when you go out on there, I think that's gonna be a problem.
I guess, I didn't know. I guess my point.
Well, if anybody else come, or you don't even always get over there, but then you got somebody turning on that road and then you're sitting there having a standoff and.
And I guess my point to the reason why we can't turn that is how many times are you there and see a truck turn left and go out that way? Cause half the farms we can go to are in Thorntown, but we still have to go on into Darlington to go up there to go to forty-seven, so I mean, by all rides, if I thought I could make that corner, I would have already been going out that way to get to forty-seven, cause I'm going to Thorntown. Yeah, I mean, we're literally jogging through Darlington, we got back to forty-seven to turn back left anyplace.
What I'm saying is if we can at all possible, it's gonna be easier to fix the problems that are worse. If it's turnable, if it's fixable, if that makes sense.
Okay, so I'm gonna get out of here, cause you guys probably had other things to talk about.
Thank you, guys.
We're gonna talk about you.
Well, I figured, but.
Oh, I do wanna say something. Brian has come out on two different times for that lift station on five hundred. Middle of the evening, middle of the night. Don't let this man go. If you've ever lift, and I apologize about that, if you ever open the top of that thing and look down in there, you're greeted with what you would never wanna ever see.
And never wanna see again.
And I mean, with, with the manhole cover is running over, you know, the next one down, and he's come out and it's, it's a holiday, he came out on a holiday. This guy needs to stick around.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
I just said, here you go, you just look at it.
Disposable, everybody, you know, thinks they're disposable, flushable wipes. My son loves a flusher.
They're not, they're not.
Yeah, he's cleaned way too many of those out.
Where is this?
It's down by Fiddler's.
Well, they're flushable, but that's the result.
So Memorial Weekend, we had that issue. And then July, two weeks ago, whenever, same problem. Both pumps, both were like that. That pump has been taken apart. There's a housing that sits underneath there. It's an impeller that's wrapped up. And then it just gets so full it can't turn, which is gonna burn the motors up, which were five thousand feet or anything. But last bill I had very good was for two pumps.
Yeah.
Was for that lift station. I spent two pumps. So I don't have an answer, but it's gonna be expensive.
Is there, and I'm just asking because obviously there's no way you can get people to be convinced to quit doing it. Is there something to go around the bottom that kinda screen them a little bit or?
Not, I mean, it would plug up and then it would suck. So that tank's six foot around. And that stuff plugs in there, the thing's a flood for a while and then they get waterlogged and then they suck them in. But I mean, there's other stuff, I didn't take a picture down on there. That's the worst.
Not that anybody reads it, but probably put that on the electric bill and not that anybody's gonna pay a damn bit of attention to it.
I've actually put it on the newsletter, I'll let you know, but I'm actually thinking I'm gonna take that picture and put it on the chat or.
This is why you.
I am, and then but, you know, think about what you are flushing down because.
So meanwhile though, you need to check these like monthly then and see, I mean, I know that's.
I mean.
I'd rather.
I'm sure they're doing.
I'm just asking, I'm not.
We don't pull them, they're, they ride a rail, there's two rails. And the rest of that pump is into, or the outflow, there's a outflow pipe that's on a rail and then slides all the way down to the outflow that high pressure discharges it into town. And you gotta get the bigger Derek, which I've done it.
So it's not easy, like I pick up a lid and go against.
It's got twenty-five feet in the ground.
Okay.
No, it's not a quick fix.
Looks like your hairpiece.
I mean, if you can get people, I don't know. I don't know, I put something stupid on the Darlington chat or.
I will. I mean, what's.
Two hundred dollars a month, this is why, or, I don't know what the, how you get, I don't know.
You're not gonna get people quit.
Yeah.
I invite everybody to come.
So.
Well, it's very eye opening, they don't, nobody. If you at least make them aware and say that the council's gonna be, you know, having to entertain the thought of
Raising the price.
Maintenance fee. Because I'll put on there that it's five thousand dollars a pump and I'll put that, this is less than two years old. I mean.
Well, it's not even that.
No, it's, it's less than a year old, right? Because we got it last year.
We got UMass.
Yes.
As they were just all rated for a year for.
Like October of last year it was put in, I think.
Yeah.
Yep.
And that was rebuilt, I think.
So I'll do it, I don't care.
But we had, did you get the bill yet for the other company to clean them out?
Not yet.
Okay, which we had cleaned out right after this one. So that company, you guys found the other thing down. The grease on the walls is this deep, that thick. And then count venom and products and everything. So they come in, pressure wash, deep grease, and then suck all that out. Plus the bottom, you get sludge, heavy stuff. They did that, we haven't got the bill yet, but uh had to do all the lift stations. But I don't know. Stuff that doesn't necessarily have to happen. Just, and that is expensive for the thing, so. I could tell you, but till you see a picture, it's.
Yeah.
It speaks volumes, yeah.
Good, we have somebody check with people that are taking care of the sewage and make sure that they're checking that once a month. I mean, we all, they all, they may know that.
You have to take it apart, you can't just check it. You gotta pull everything apart.
Yeah, oh.
Yeah, you gotta get a crane in there to lift them up out of there.
Yeah. Okay.
Physically on both pump. When somebody calls complaining that your stuff isn't flushing right, you go look, that's when you find out that it's it's down in the hole, there's sludge and it's waste. Twenty-five, thirty feet to the bottom of this thing. And we've had two incidents, uh I.D.M. incidents because of this.
I think you need to have a council person ride with you for a day, that way they can suit up and go down in there.
I'll help him, I need to, I've changed more than one of them out helping Jason Douglas, I know.
So that's another, that's another issue I did, you know. I don't know how many incidents there are a year. I don't know anything about I.D.M., don't wanna know, but if this gets to be a five monthly problem, they may start knocking on your doors. I'm sure I.D.M. sees this. Problem.
Well, you never know.
Okay, Brian, tell them the next bad news. Cause I'm telling you, tonight is, is not gonna be fun. Tonight's not fun, so get ready. Yeah.
So Douglas and Harrison. Douglas and Harrison, this is Harrison. Douglas is two blocks over, I know Anderson Marshall.
Yeah.
For you.
Yeah.
We had a sinkhole, which was about that big. So I threw some stone in it and it lasted about the next spring. Uh so Christ come out and it was cracked at the edge of the street.
That's at the Y, right, when Brian Douglas is.
Brian Cummings?
Brian Cummings.
No, no.
That's not that one, yeah, okay.
This is.
My, I know Anderson's.
Okay, correct, right here, yep.
This is four motor. So that's a sixteen inch plate pile, which the pounds below it, that's all our stolen water consistency. So it cracked and it was thrown in the water. So when they, they don't take that piece out, but you seen it. You know, when they got that piece out, look, this is under the road and it was totally collapsed. It's supposed to be round.
Oh, all, all the way back, right?
Yeah. So this pipe's supposed to be round.
Yeah, 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 you can see that.
Yeah, you can see the crack and all the way through. So they had to cut the road all the way through and replace everything. Imagine every drain that goes into the road looks like it on its own.
Oh yes, we have one that runs through our front yard and I guarantee, cause our front porch is now.
So that's part of the truck traffic problem as well and that's just a matter of time until that one collapses. So that was the next thing, which Christ got that fixed, it was gonna be, I don't know. Had that bill yet, that was Monday or Tuesday, so. They were like, well, what do you wanna do with that? I said, thanks, you can't leave it.
Yeah, right.
So. So yeah, the last couple of weeks have been.
Yeah, they've been trying.
Yes. So. That's all the pictures I got. Uh, that's, I don't know. Jump on that, salt spreader, was gonna get a new motor, it's twenty-six hundred dollars. A whole new salt spreader is seven thousand, two hundred dollars. The one we currently got, it's been here longer than I have, so I don't know which route you wanna take on that.
Half the price, it'd be better off buying a whole new spreader than, well, I agree, but I want them to know too, so.
I don't know when I would buy, but the one currently got, I don't know.
Had wooden wheels on it when they got it.
I mean, there ain't much to do on this stainless box with a drag chain. Drag chains failed, the clutches failed, uh forever has failed and the motor has failed. Stainless box. I mean, I talked to Crawford still.
We've worked a long way.
Talked to Mark Cox, they had the same style. And he said they had three of them, they just got tired of.
Yeah.
They're the same, exactly, they're the same. And so one, the buyers for seven thousand dollar ones, what they went to last year. They got electric motors.
Okay.
They don't have a gas powered motor, so. And a gas, uh, electric motor and electric jack, drag chain, so. I think in the first case, you just replace the electric motor, I think they're twenty-six hundred dollars. So I don't know.
I think we should probably get on it, so we're on behind the ball, don't have our salt spreader this winter.
I was looking at it the other day and I thought, that's bad. I said something, I was gonna get pricing and I kinda forgot about it.
Sure.
August.
Yeah, yeah, a little bit going on.
Well, it's August, so for far as from the snow, but.
Does everybody feel about that?
Say that.
I think it'd be better to just get a new one and fix something that we've been fixing.
Well, I mean, why not, you gotta have a budget. Cause the town of Darlington pay powerball, can they play it?
Do, do we have the money, that's what I'm gonna ask.
Well, um, I, I'll have to do an additional preparation and N V H just because, you know, we don't appropriate that much more. We, what we appropriate is spreading the salt or spreading the snow removal or whatever, but we have the money to do additional preparation. I will tell you that is like a two-month process basically from the time I do it, the time I advertise it, the time I get it over there, but you still gotta order it anyway, so. But yes, we'll get approved of the additional, if, if you wanna vote on doing that, we'll do that and then we can start the process.
First, there's a problem.
Yeah.
Well, I'm sure.
I'll beat him up a little bit.
Which one?
Hornet.
Hornet, yeah, I talked to Jason Shire, but still Hornet, so.
Um, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna have a motion to approve the spreader.
The additional.
The additional preparation for the, purchasing the new spreader.
I make a motion, we approve the additional preparation for the new spreader, salt spreader.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I have the paper, but I have to plan another day, but I don't know what the price is, seven something.
Yeah. Yeah, I think so, so that was on.
I think mine is on my phone.
What other pleasantries do you have?
Uh.
Before we start about here.
Other what?
Before we start about here, cause I wanna do that before you woke up at the door.
Oh, here?
Yep.
I don't know if that didn't drop in my time on.
Well, I mean, I need to explain the other part anyways first, so.
So.
But I wanna make sure you're done with your.
Well, if you need exact price, I can get that, but.
No, I'm not, I wanna just do another one for them.
So uh Lady on, let's get flooded out.
Yeah, I have one, Doslers.
Doslers, I don't know where they're. At Conrad, Reeve Riley Conrad.
Email.
Anyway, Reeve Riley gave me a quote, it was about three hundred thousand and I got one price going to get me a quote. For sure, we can't do the three hundred thousand, that was from Madison, all the way to seven hundred. So I'm gonna have Reeve Riley, and I just had Glenn after I got Reeve Riley's to put the curb box right there in front of Claps, build a curb all the way around. Put us curb box right there at that drive at people's. And then the outlet to the creek. These planes had it going east, but everybody agreed it'd be easier, cause that curb box at the house would even harm his client. That would take care of her problem, their problem, and maybe something we can afford, I don't know yet, but wanna get some numbers on that, I don't know, so.
Is that gonna take care of the water coming down the hill off of School Street too?
It'll take care of the water, yes. Anything that goes along the west side of seven hundred from probably Claps Drive to protect School Street should go into curb boxes, so. Told them both to design it, the curb box and Claps, to meet these specs, that way it'll ever go up and it'll all fit.
It'll take it.
Yeah, well, it'll take it and then you built this back, there's all, all the elevations, all the halls. So kinda going backwards, but if they build it to these specs, then they should be able to go up the hill if we never get that far. So. There is a drain that comes all the way from Academy Place that comes down Washington and then catty corners over like through Doc's Burrows Yard. And it outlets on the south side of the bridge on five hundred. Worst case, we can put a curb box there in that on School Street. As far as trying to get the water from that lady's house, curb, uncle's house, uh I just wanna deal with that west side.
So is Glenn gonna have you numbered by the next meeting or supposed to?
I hope by the next meeting, I met with him Monday as well, I called him a few weeks ago, but Monday was as quick as I could get him up.
Mike, I ain't good news.
Any more, any more news?
No, not really, just keeps coming.
Not afraid.
Nope.
I went to court with Tyler in one.
Sure.
Hey, there's good news.
There we go.
Good thinking, Mike.
I guess with all that, you can jump in on the building and see where they're gonna send their money and stuff. Have to be a birdman.
So let's talk about the community center. We talked about maybe selling the downtown building and selling it in July. Brian's coming in with our infrastructure as to how it's falling apart and continues to fall apart as we build the other structures. So, you know, I gave you a spreadsheet on, on this building over here, I have since I came here. I'll tell you how much it costs. I decided to do something a little bit different. I just want you to have this information before we pour in like a commitment on coming to this building, okay? Jake, wanna pass it down? What I did was a snapshot of the town hall and the community center. These, this is from, I did uh January first to August first of twenty twenty-four, January first to August first of twenty twenty-five. Okay. So I, and I did that because I want you to understand what a month, what it costs for this building and what it costs for the town hall before we ever even go. Because it's not just, hey, you know, we can move. It, and I, and nobody wants to hear this. I, I've done this spreadsheet, you guys, since two thousand eighteen and I get nothing back and, and not blaming you, but I do, I get nothing back. So I thought, you know what, I'm just gonna pull utility to utility. Uh now this building has a few more because you have to have inspections on the chairlifts, you have to have the boiler inspection. And those, you, you can see the cost here. But this is, this is these two years recap of this building. Um, our rentals are down and this would have been a little bit higher, this is all the way to the end of twenty-five here. I did have a wedding reception, but they moved it region because they wanted to have alcohol and they didn't wanna jump. There is a few groups you gotta jump through here, it's just, it is what it is. And it's nothing against her, she's sweet as can be, she just, it was gonna work out better for her, okay? Um, but that's all I'm gonna get in. Now, that doesn't count walking money, that's like maybe a hundred, maybe a hundred and forty dollars a month. But when Brian was asked to, the, the walkers were complaining because it's hot in here when they were walking. So they complained and wanted Tracy to have the, the air bumped up because they were hot. That took, cause I don't even know what temperature you guys had, I don't have no idea.
Like seventy-eight?
Yeah, well, so it was, you know, you, we have these phenomenal bills in January, sixteen hundred, fourteen hundred. But it came in at um sixty-five, seventy-three when they had it that high at seventy-eight, so they put it to seventy, correct?
Seventy-two.
Seventy-two, that just took the electric alone to two ninety-three, seventy-six. And that, and that's on thirteen, or that's not on, that's the thirteenth to the fifteenth, it's actually two inches short. That's, just tells you how high it gets. Now, you can say, you can see what it costs to fill this thing, it's fuel too. So if we move in here and it, and it's running all the time, you know, the, the air and the heat, seven days a week at a comfortable temperature or whatever, you know that these numbers are gonna change.
So, uh, what's the town's responsibility? We own this?
You own this building.
Okay.
So I, I just want you to think about, maybe we should sell this, I, I know I'm gonna be, you know, people are gonna string me up, but.
I just don't see how we uh forty-one thousand dollars, two hundred and ninety-one. Wow, um, and that's, that's just not even a whole year.
Right, that's why I just did this only, be, instead of all the other stuff I did on the other spreadsheets, you know, I'm trying to give you all of it. That's why I just did this. And I don't want you guys to commit to something that, not just right now, what, how we've been.
No, and they did, that's interesting, yeah, there's no way.
Because when the town bought this place, and I'm not, I'm not throwing any. Because when the town bought this place, and I'm not, I'm not throwing any kind of us. But there was no plan put together as to how, am I right? There was no plan put together as how to pay for this place. This is just utilities. This is just maintenance. This doesn't even include the softener. This doesn't include. I didn't put the repairs for the bathroom toilets because. Well, we had one water bill that was eight hundred dollars. That's not in here. That's not in here. I didn't include that. Um. I thought that this would be a better snapshot before we went and pulled any tritium. And I know. I know that selling, I know the controversy is gonna, I do, I get it. But. If somebody can come up with a solution of how to pay for it, that would be outstanding, but I'm telling you, I've worked on this thing and thought about it since two thousand eighteen. As to how to utilize this building and let it pay for itself. I got nothing. I don't, you guys, I don't know what to do. I I I mean. I don't think that the D F I can afford it. I don't really. I mean, obviously you could go to them, but I don't know how they can pay these utilities. Oh, I.
Basically, you're looking at.
Yeah.
Sixty. Sixty thousand a year, probably if you're first through. January through. January first through August first is forty one thousand, so you got. You're looking at sixty or sixty five, sixty or sixty, sixty thousand dollars anyway.
It's over a thousand dollars a week.
That's crazy.
It is.
Yeah.
And and break it even down to a day, it's.
Yeah, the one thing. Yeah.
I'm not trying to be bad news.
No, I'm not either, but I want you guys to do the right thing. I want you to do the right thing, not just now, but down the road.
And that's.
That's what I'm looking for here, for you.
That's my personal issue is, is trying to be fiscally responsible for the town tells me to do one thing. Growing up here, living here, and thinking about selling this and somebody. Turning it into whatever, cause we wouldn't have any say in that. It's pretty scary too.
Well, it is a historical building on the historical landmark, so the outside would have to stay the same. The lot of it would have to stay the same. You know, I talked to Matt Walters for a little bit and asked him, you know, what his thoughts were. He's like, well, you know, we could, it could be a great wedding venue for someone. That is like the thing to do. Um, you know, you guys don't have to go out there and ask for some astronomical price for it, but. You do have to keep it because it is registered, looking the same way, you know, so that. I don't think it's a hinder. I hope that's help. I have no clue, but I'm not, they don't.
So that would be another. Hang up for me. What? Does that go along like the person buys it, just saying, and they turn it, try to turn it into a wedding venue? And the outside starts looking not very good. How hard is the state gonna come down on them to really make it look, I mean, if they're not, you know what I'm saying, like?
Well, you, we can, we can with our code.
We can, we can, but we know how could our code, I mean. But you know what I'm saying? I mean, we can write tickets, Mike can write tickets, but. What's it gonna look like in ten years if we sold it to somebody? It's not, that never happens.
But if you go bankrupt trying to.
That's what I said, it's both, it's, I I get it. I mean, I'm, I totally get it.
It's gonna be a decommissioned building if we keep it. I mean, unfortunately, I know, I know. You know, I asked my dad last night, cause he played ball in here. I said, I've got a question for you. He goes, Michelle, but the school coming down was a bigger deal than even on. I only paid ball in here because they had to wait for a gym to get done at the school. I didn't, you know, nobody was allowed in here. It was the guards. People didn't come in and play in here. They didn't come in and out of it, you know, it's, it is a building that has set in the same location, but. No, if you're, and he's, you know, he played a lot of ball, and he's like, no, it was just a temporary thing. That's all it was. I was like, well, I was just curious to see what his thought was at his age, you know? It's like, yeah, I get it, so. I I don't know, you guys, but we can't sit on this. I mean, I don't, I'm not asking you to, you know, hey, take a vote, make it. But I didn't wanna bring up these bids without giving you this in front of you, because I have no idea. I don't know what to do. And the rentals were not high. It isn't a matter of raising the rental. We are not high on our rentals at all. And and, or someone didn't. Because people want a place that's more, uh, to be, or less space. You know, this is too, well, this is too big. You know, somebody's gonna have to come in and do whatever with it, but. I don't know. There's the other, you know, while you're down, there you go. Go hit you more, but.
Another thing, and I hate to say it, but I've been here thirteen years. And they spent that same amount every year.
Yeah.
And that's seven hundred thousand, eight hundred thousand dollars. That would count in like the granders, you know, you're probably spending a million dollars on this.
So where's, where's the, yeah, I I agree with you. Where, where does? Just, if if we was to not be in charge of this place anymore, one way or the other. Where does the money to pay for this, all this, where would that end up at?
This is general tax dollars paying for this. General tax dollars and.
So that, I'm just, I'm just asking.
Coming out of your budget.
Yeah.
That could be used.
Yep.
It could be used for roads.
I mean, some of it's the rental money.
Turfing the ball dining.
You know, like last year, we had seven thousand dollar year or whatever, we had rental money, okay? But you know, see, the thing was, I hadn't met with the D L G F to see what the cuts were gonna be for the next through. You know, you're facing this at the county. Ours, ours isn't bad, but ours isn't, I know, the county's huge. Twenty six isn't, but twenty seven and twenty eight are. I mean, he's gonna be affected with the twenty sixth budget, cause he's gonna go to Arlene. Okay, that's where I, that's the first place I could go. But you've got twenty and seven and twenty, twenty eight, they haven't even put a prediction out there for twenty eight. Now, why? It's good for us as a homeowner, outstanding for us as a homeowner. That's the other side of it, just like you said, Jeremy, I'm on this side, and I want this, and I'm on this side, I want this. That's the part of these jobs that that. You are on both sides of it. But how can you sit there, they predict twelve thousand eight hundred dollars, and then we pay this out in rental for. For no return. There's, there's no return here. You know, I thought, well, we could rent out spa, we don't have space to rent out. We don't have anything to to offer.
We don't even have like a.
We don't have.
Kitchen, that somebody could come in and do classes, you know, we just don't have any.
I meant like rent to visit, you know, hey, maybe they could put an office here and give us a lease on it, maybe, but we don't, we don't have that to do that with. I just.
I'd be interested, not that I would, but I would be interested just to know what. A person would think you could get out of this in a way, you know what I mean?
You know, I almost called Matt. I really did, but I don't know. I'm not sure.
I'll probably see.
The problem is, it costs you so much to get.
What if we.
Somebody to come in and appraise it.
Well, that guy gave me a deal. I got that guy from London to give our second appraisals when I couldn't, cause Beth didn't do it. He did it for four hundred dollars, just like Matt did, or, I mean, he matched Matt to give us a second appraisal. And we actually talked about, he's on the council for our town, and he's like. You own that building? I said, yeah, and he goes, oh my god. Well, I'm actually doing, he goes, that would be awful. That's what he said.
So what if we, what if we went towards somebody who deals with historical places that would be able to come in and say, hey, this is. This is what this building could be used for. Let's sell it for that. That purpose, let's, let's push that purpose, you know, like, like I sold my house in Michigan, but it was a hunting land, so I went to a realtor that sold hunting land. That kind of stuff, that would push that kind of stuff.
I I would probably start with Matt, just to see, I mean, I'm, I'm not expertise in any of that, honestly, I'm not. I just think that you gotta find some happy medium there as to, you know.
I would think that. If we decide, if the final decision is to. The town can't afford to keep it in the long run, if that's what the final decision is. Then we would. Go to D F I first. I don't see, looking at those numbers, I don't see how they could ever.
And is it okay if we show this to someone? I mean, is there anybody? Absolutely, I'm just making, yeah, I just owe them all on here, yeah, okay.
I would think we first would be that, and then from there, then you go to.
Cause, cause honestly, I hate to say that, but there's no way that we can.
Oh, no, I would offer it to whoever, yeah, I would offer it to whoever wants to take it over first around here. Cause you know, you know that's gonna come up. You know that, the, the historical and it's been around here for years. You know this is gonna come up.
And I don't think, I I I wouldn't go the, and I know you won't, but I wouldn't go the community after selling it.
You, you bought it for a dollar. And and let me tell you what, you bought it for a dollar because they knew, they knew they didn't, the federal government didn't want it, cause they knew they weren't gonna pay for it.
And looking at those numbers, not that we would tell anybody, but looking at those numbers, if somebody wanted it for.
That's what I'm saying. Yeah, I mean, that's what I mean.
I mean, you know, D F I said they did want it, sells it for a dollar.
Yeah.
If they can manage it. They may be able to manage it.
Differently.
They may not wanna keep it at seventy two, seven days a week. You know what I'm saying? Because you wouldn't have to, I mean, unless you wanted to, but. But as a town, we're obligated to. We got five walkers and, you know, it's just.
We're not, but we can't have things freeze up. We can't, you know, we're, it's, yeah. You can keep it normally, bust us.
Oh, yeah.
They might be able to manage it different than what the town.
They might be in a position where they could actually get, they could get.
Same rules, I guess, is what I'm saying.
Like, they could qualify this, different things under the historical, the town can't. But they could, they could qualify for historical money when they got a grant to put into it. There is a possibility. If they want to. I mean, again, I would want them to know, they don't know this side, cause they don't pay this side. They don't know this. And they need to know that.
I will broach the subject.
Hey, got a dollar? Sold.
I would broach the subject with one of the people that's on the D F I board and see if they even.
Is that possible to do that for? I mean, we got it for a dollar. Is that even possible? I think it's two appraisals out there and.
It's a nonprofit, yeah.
Yeah, okay, I thought it was, but you know, anymore.
And and you could also work a deal where you could continue to have your meetings in here. I don't know what.
Right, I mean, yeah, cause we, cause we had to have a place to have a meeting.
Sell it to you for a dollar, if.
The rest of the community center had, the town owns it, but it's ran by the community center. And they, the community center pays most of the expenses. Um. So there may be a situation where you help pay some of the expenses.
By doing a rental.
For roller skating. I don't see that happening here.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm just thinking of a similar ish type of situation where.
But, yeah, I mean, we, we, and and I hate to say this too, but this isn't something that could go in the back burner, you guys. It cannot go in the back burner. This isn't something that you set, this has to, we have to keep on this, and we have to get this done. Because. As you can tell, like Brian added up and what we spent over the years, and I'm gonna quit with that amount. When this building was bought. They took a total in a seven year span. They took a total of forty six thousand dollars out of wastewater and forty six thousand dollars out of. Wastewater had a bond on it at the time.
On this?
They sure did, wastewater. They took, yeah, wastewater had, still have the bond, we have twenty seven year bond.
Oh, yes, oh, so.
I know, not on this building, no, on the town. To fund it, I, when I took over, it stopped because you can't take one, you know, she did a tax to some loo up. I understand what she's doing. I do. But fiscally. We don't pull from, to utility, and then we just got a bond on our electric. So. I have to share that because that's what, you know, you ask, where's our money in wastewater? Well, yeah, I stopped that. I didn't do it in two thousand eighteen. I stopped it right then, so. Um. That's how it, you know, cause you get there, well, how were we doing it before? And I'm not saying that wasn't right, wrong, or otherwise, that is what they chose to do, and that is fine. They did what they chose to do to help it.
So why don't we? Why don't we have someone, Jeremy, contact. D F I and see what, let them, I mean, cause they'll have to have a meeting about that.
And and Jeremy don't wanna do it, I know, they just. I'd rather anyone way there.
I'll talk to Mary Lou about it.
Yeah.
And I know that they're gonna be heartsick, but I understand.
I'm not happy about it, but it is, I mean.
But as I said, I.
I shouldn't say no, I.
Ever since they bought it, it's gonna be a white off hundred dollars. It's never going to be able to fund itself.
And he, I can't even. I've thought about it too. I can't come up with anything to just. Go borrow a hundred, I'm just saying, go, I can't even come up with anything, go borrow a hundred thousand dollars to try to move some stuff around or do something else out there to make it. Something, and I just, there's nothing, there's nothing there.
I mean, we'll barely, barely, we'll do it now, what about in ten years when none of us are sitting here and they're trying to keep it going?
Spend another six hundred thousand dollars in ten years, and then none of us are here, and then.
Well, you'd be doing the same thing that was done to you. Unfortunately, well, it's not, it's not even. It's not good to the people in this town that pay the taxes on the roof, including all of us. So, we have a lot of other things that are pressing and. Now, with that said, I still wanna get rid of the parking lot down there because the town hall might need it for this, so that was a possibility down the road.
So go ahead and sit, go ahead and sell the property, the property down there and use that to, that money to fix up what we need, what needs to be fixed.
And that's really, yeah, I mean, everything else is doable down there, but.
For a dollar?
No, you want the army for the dollar, the fire department needs it for training, right?
There you go.
But I didn't wanna go, I didn't wanna go any further with.
Can we keep this on, like, um, would it be considered old business?
Open that right now.
Um, yes, yeah, we guys.
I'm gonna keep that outside, I wanna.
No, no, I, I mean, I would love to not go into twenty twenty six with, well, cause we're gonna have to get fuel.
I say by next meeting, we should, we should probably come to this.
But in my opinion. We used to always keep this, even before we had air conditioning, they came in here. But that, even in the heating, we kept it down, and these, all of a sudden, if these people are walking, says, it's, it's cold in here. Well, I don't think we have to keep it. Now, if you have it, if we had it rented out, you, you can put the stuff on for two days early and it, the heat up. But keeping this as cool as it is, I think is, is silly.
It is, but it's still, it's still won't make the difference. It won't make.
I know it will make a difference, but it'll save something. I mean, why keep it up there? If they come in and say, boy, it's hot in here, we need this air conditioning turned up, I'm sorry. Don't walk outside, we'll walk outside.
Yeah, but you gotta remember, with this old building as big as it is, if you get it too hot in here, everything's gonna start sweating, the walls are gonna.
It's not that, but it's just, you know.
Oh, it is that. It'll happen in a heartbeat.
But we just, you know, when we first had this, I mean, we didn't turn that heat up and stuff, and people came in here and walked in the winter, and they knew they were better. Put a coat on or something, and they walked.
I'll talk to Mary Lou and have her talk to the D F I board and see if there's any interest there, and then I'll send out a text message of what they have to say. I would guess they'll wanna come to a meeting because they are not gonna be happy. But reality is reality.
And I know they can't afford.
And I'm not.
And that's where.
Happy about it. I'm not happy about it, happy to get rid of it.
Military societies that would be. I, I mean, I'm just thinking, cause it was an army, you know, there always been an army made.
There might be somebody, but.
Put the gun range back in downstairs and.
Well, Rocky wanted it at one time, but.
Well, that's, I'm telling you, that's what really got the town interested in this, cause they were hoping Rocky would come in here. And help us get this going and probably take some of it over, the first thing. He got cancer and passed away. And that was one of the big issues when they got it, when they sat with him having all that out there and him with this, and he was really interested. And we really thought he might buy it.
Right, yeah, I'd say he would.
But, and he.
But there may be somebody else.
Yeah.
Like him, I don't know.
I don't know, but that was part of the reason they bought, they.
Right, right.
Okay. One law, yeah.
Yeah.
Do we have anything more for Tyler? Does it need to be here for the foreclosed properties or the?
Yeah, I'm moving foreclosed properties, Tyler. I know we've touched this like a hundred times, and I'm just not clear.
Okay.
My person, Mike's moving one for us right now, but not as a town employee, just as a personal person, okay? So, um, that's one thing, you know, like if Mike got hurt or whatever, yeah. My question is, we have a couple of the town, it was brought up in the meeting, that we have a couple of the properties that are being fore-foreclosed on. So. We just can't afford a big company to move them. I thought at one time we didn't have the right to go on that property and do it, or do we have the right to go on and move it and?
Well, your ordinance says you do after notice. Ten day notice.
So, an employee can go mow it if they want to, or they can hire someone to mow it.
Right.
By notice, would that be just putting it on the door? Would it be, do we have to?
I think the ordinance says mailed notice. And. Did I happen to print that?
Well, they get, they don't, no, they, they come back. You know what I mean?
Brands over there, I mean. Who owns it? Nobody knows. The taxes get paid, but nobody will claim owner then. Who do you mail that to?
We've tried three times and comes right back. Circles its way right back to us.
Right. Yeah, because your ordinance says.
Courts to tell them they owe us another hundred dollars if they ever sells.
Sent to the address, just in county hardware for tax statements.
Didn't you try that and they said they didn't own it? They just pay the taxes on them?
Uh, well, yeah, when I tried to reach out to the people paying taxes on it, they said, oh, we don't want it, we're not doing, we're not paying that. We should pay the taxes on it. That's all they said. And I have the right to pay the taxes on it. You make a big property taxes.
Certified or regular.
Okay.
And so if you send it as regular, it's considered served three days after you send it. My, our position in Crowbridge, I think, has always been, put it, if you put it on the door as well, then you're covered.
Okay.
Take a picture of paying on the. Always helps.
Was there anything else Tyler that we were, you know? Oh, let's talk about, we need to talk about this. I don't know that we need you for this. We're not, we're like, why you're here, let's do it. Um, let's talk about Jason for just a second. Jason had one more week of, you guys awarded him through his vacation. But your employee manual says that if you don't finish the year, that we don't pay vacation. He already took two weeks of it and it was paid. So they, do they vote not to pay him, or do they even have to vote to not pay him that third week? And I'll be honest with you, Jason came in, he said, I don't care either way. I just need to know if I need to legally pay him that third week of vacation.
I would, my, and I know the handbook says we don't have to, but just to make sure nothing rolls on the backside of all of it, I would say we just pay him the week and be done with it.
When I retired from AT&T, I had almost six weeks vacation. They prorated it. They broke it down by month and here's, when you retired, here's what's supposed to pay you, period. So, I didn't get paid for all the days that I'd earned over thirty years.
Yeah, I get that and, and I could be, and, and it's not a for Jason thing because it's neither here nor there. For me, it's just. For me, it's like, for me, for me, it's just like, pay him that week and he resigned and. Be done with it. That's my, and then there's no way he can come do anything or.
I, I know, I see what you're saying.
That's my.
But you paid him four weeks.
I get it, I understand. That's just my take on it. I, I'd be either way, but that's my.
I don't know if it's in the input written that way.
You guys decide, you make a motion of what you wanna do and I will do it the next payroll. That's why I'm here and that's why Tyler's here because I just wanted to make sure that we are doing what we were supposed to.
Well, did we tell?
I do get both sides of it.
I wasn't here at that meeting, I was here. And I talked on the phone. Did we tell him that he wouldn't get vacation when he came back his?
No, it's just in the employee manual that he.
Of signs.
Okay, yeah.
And we gave him three weeks vacation as part of it, because I think he had four before.
We paid him four weeks when he left.
We told him three weeks.
When he got rehired.
He took.
Okay.
Two.
The whole thing to start all this, he took two weeks off.
Okay. But you know what, I'm just here thinking about.
Did he leave in this year and come back?
Yeah.
Well, if you paid him for the four weeks and then he came back.
But you know what? He didn't re-sign the employee manual. So, you know, he was gone for a month and then came back. So, he would have technically needed to re-sign the employee manual, right?
Yeah.
And you gave him two weeks for seven months, so it's more than three weeks for twelve months.
Yes.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
I, I just don't see how we're gonna practice this, everyone actually paying it. I, I understand both sides, but I just don't feel like, I just don't feel comfortable if we told him.
My, my concern. I don't know about concern.
Fired and quitting, whether you paid your vacation or not?
Not usually.
I can see firing people and paying them out for the vacation.
I guess, that's why.
Just, just to be honest.
I can see firing somebody and then you owe a vacation.
Yeah.
But if they quit.
You corporate that.
They quit on their own.
Yeah.
So, I, I do not disagree with you at all, either one of you. I don't disagree.
It don't matter to me.
It don't matter to me either.
Here's, I do not disagree with what you're saying at all and a part of me, just because how all this went down, makes me not want to, but just, there's nothing, he, he can't. There's nobody, nobody can come back and say that, well, this or this counts, one needs pay. And it was just a fresh start. He resigned and brought his resignation letter to Michelle. We pay him the one week. And then, just, it's up and we go about trying to find a replacement. I mean, I don't, I don't disagree with you at all, Brian. I mean, I mean, that's really where I would normally be at with it.
I'm not disagreeing with him, I'm just saying, you got two weeks for seven months is more than you would get. For the twelve months.
Totally, I totally understand what you're saying and I don't disagree with you per se.
Probably so much for the months, you finish out that year or whatever.
Well, I retired in February, so they pretty much beat me out of fifty-two days.
I sure did, so, yeah. So, you're probably not gonna get my A on it. It was a choice, but it was a choice I made.
Yeah.
I made the choice to come here and he made the choice to, to resign, you know, so. But, I, my job is just to ask and pay. If you tell me to pay, I'll pay. If you vote to not pay, I won't pay. But I wanted Tyler to send them, he's your attorney, so.
You won't have to do any other benefit.
No, they've said what they have to say, so.
That would be it, I just.
I don't think we oughta pay him. I don't care. I, I feel like he did the town wrong. I don't want him to ever come back. If he ever comes here and asks for a job again, uh-uh, no way. And I just, I'm not happy about it and maybe I shouldn't be that way. And I guess, to be a good Christian, I should say, go ahead and pay. And that's what we're gonna do, I'm sure. But I don't have to be happy about it.
And, and I'm not happy about the way it all went down either. My, I am not happy about either and I let, and know that, but, when I talk to him, but, I guess. I'm coming from the point of being on the board.
I don't want him to sue us either.
Anything, I'm not worried about necessarily, just, just as.
You're, you're paying him good money.
I see when I first said it, you shook your head like, are you?
I, I think that's, I think that's fine what you're proposing. It, it, uh, has, there's some goodwill behind it, we'll put it that way.
But on the other side of it, if we decided to not pay it, he, there's no grounds that he would ever end on the backside if anything came.
Michelle's correct in what the handbook says, which I'm sure she read it, that's what it says, then.
We're on record as saying that, but he never signed it.
Well, I think the handbook, was it updated or does?
Yeah, it's the same one he signed before.
Yeah, so it was just a difference in the number of weeks that was discussed, not the policy of if you leave in the year. It's current, you lose the rest of it.
It is, we're just gonna vote on the handbook.
We gave him, we gave him three weeks, but the handbook says, if you quit, we don't have to pay whatever unused vacation that you have. We.
Is that how it's worded?
Yes.
Sorry, let's ask.
No, you're fine.
Well, it's none of my business. I don't have a dog in this fight, but sitting here listening, you're, you're going over money issues, how you're short money everywhere. Just to give somebody that much money just because, it doesn't make sense to me, but I'm gonna sleep just fine whether he gets that check or not, I don't.
Michelle, how much is this sour for one week? And then do we have to pay?
If an employee terminates, this is her employment before the end of the year, this is her vacation balance, will not be paid. It says it will not.
And I know where Jerry's hearing coming from, but I, I'm telling you, when I found out he left you, Ryan, in the middle of that night. And it, I'm talking the whole town. This just wasn't one house out here. One house was out or.
It was a big outing.
It was, it was the whole town. And I realized it wasn't our fault, it was due. You still had to be out there with due. And somebody walking away says, I'm going home, I thought to myself, what is the matter? I says, is it, I got problems? I mean, I'm, that, that's like leaving if there's a fire and I'm gonna leave the two other guys here doing the fire and I'm gonna go home. I don't need, I don't need this. I mean, I'm sorry. That, that just threw me, just, and I, I just can't understand it.
Your vacation leave policy, anyway, was he came back in October, he came back in October. Right? I think he came back in October, right? So, October, that's three months and we're what, eight, nine, ten, that's eleven months, right? Almost ten, ten half months. So, six months to four years, you only get ten days. He's already taken two weeks vacation and got paid for it. You see what I mean?
I make a motion.
So, I was gonna say, I make a motion that we just don't pay him and.
And we're done.
We're done.
I'll second that. All favor. Aye. All opposed.
We do this, it's gonna be a long thing and nobody brought snacks.
I can't believe you didn't order a couple pizzas.
One more. Look at you, you're ready to drive, please. Uh, salaries. Let's talk about salaries for just a second. So, obviously, we're gonna have to hire someone to be first to. On utility, salary ordinance. Minimum that new person will have to make what Jason was making, is that correct on utilities? Or is that just a elected official that will?
That's just elected official.
Okay, perfect. I wasn't sure.
Yeah.
And I wanted to make sure before, I don't even know if it's gonna be brought up tonight, but I, I know it's gonna be brought up before we meet again. And I just wanted to make sure that they were open to be able to do what they need to do. Okay, thank you. I think I'm done. How about the rest of them? Come on, you have fun when you come here. You don't, you've got lots of questions.
Thank you, Tyler. I don't.
I'm gonna say, do you spend as much time with anybody else?
Oh, I do.
Um, if, if we wanna let Ryan go, we can.
Yeah.
Ryan, um, I've got, these two resumes came before, uh, they just came, okay? They just showed up at the office. Um, do, or do we wanna put an ad out there? Is that what you're thinking? Do you put an, an ad again? Um, because one of these, I think, we already know is, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, because he inquired about our insurance, like what it would cost us now and stuff. Okay, so we're a little higher than what he's currently at, well, yeah.
You're not obligated to post it, are you?
We are.
Are you really?
We really are obligated to post any job opening now. I mean, these can come in and they can look at them, but we're supposed to, we are supposed to at least put it out there for ten days.
I was gonna say, most companies are ten to thirty.
I'll put it in the paper like at the last, I can't do that indeed, that indeed is expensive and I didn't get anything back from it. Inba will put it on a board.
I'm gonna say, I have someone that.
Well, Inba will do that.
Do you wanna just use the original that we had?
Yeah.
Is that okay?
Yep, okay, I'll just use that. Because like I said, I texted her this on Monday. Oh, because salaries are debatable and I don't know.
Salary's gonna have to depend on her skill level.
Okay, yes.
Fully certified or.
Yeah, I mean, have a base though, so I can at least. Not really.
No, okay.
Because if you give them a base, it won't, they won't, they really need to come.
If they're qualified and licensed and doing the same thing, he's gonna know what the base is, so.
Yeah, I mean, you really need to have them come in front of you and then you guys can, yeah, because it does make a difference with this. And what level they are and what skills they have.
Do you have a copy? So, I can send him.
Okay, yeah, I can send you one tomorrow, just like a copy. I think, Brian, I think that's all we're having. I just wanted to make sure. I just wanted to make sure where you were at on that.
Go enjoy your food, Brian.
Wanna send a pizza our way, leftovers, any leftovers you want.
Thank you, Brian.
Does anybody have anything for me?
Nope.
No, but thank you for everything.
I'll take it, because I'm gonna put them on the chatter.
So, what did they decide?
That court?
Yeah.
That they have sixty days to remove the truck and the tires or, I can't remember what the plan was out to make.
Where is this, for which property? Oh, yeah, the weirdo.
Sixty, gotta be placed.
And what was the, I didn't, I missed, what you said, say them?
They asked you to remove the truck and the tires.
Is the truck plated?
I don't think so. It wasn't the last time I saw it. I don't.
Oh, it's one on the, the alleyway. At the, because I noticed my neighbor moved all his stuff out of the alleys. Kevin and Shelby went out and, um, maybe it's a door opening on the alley, so, okay. Um, now, I don't know, they got them all, but they got whatever was going on that particular, both of them did a shift of alleys.
Well, I know, um, Brian, they mentioned there's one down from me that has a tank and I noticed the tank was still there, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Because, uh, Kevin gave me, uh, ran down some of the issues that were, where I, with the alley, so, okay. I'm sure it's something they're gonna have to constantly control, you know, so, you, that's probably, for, yeah, that, you know, it's gonna be a constant.
Well, should for the alley to take over the alley now.
Yeah, because that's.
I guess I'm just gonna start from the top because I really don't know where.
He only got to publicly comment. Yeah.
Um, so do I have approval minutes for the regular meeting for July third and then the special meeting for?
I will make a motion to approve the minutes.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Money Matters, I can do the first three together, right?
You can.
So, Money Matters, so I have a. Thank you. Motion to approve the appropriations report, payroll docket.
I'm making a motion to order the pizzas.
And I second.
My blood sugar as well. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so now we've got a transfer from TC Insurance to the.
But go ahead.
And other services for the amount, Michelle's getting ready to glass.
Okay, Bob, I told you not to talk about your situation, but get it to him really quick because I just downloaded it.
Okay.
Because the park gators broke down and we, it's paid off. That's not, that was a good thing, but it's not good that it's paid off because.
It fell apart.
The park gator was running just fine, went in to start it. A young kid that works there went in to start it, called me, said, it won't start. I went over and it sounded like it fouled a plug or something, so I went and bought plugs, a new air filter, cleaned it all out, changed the plugs, which you gotta tear half that thing apart. Put them in there, still wouldn't run. Put them in there, still wouldn't run, had John Deere come pick it up, they said it had a leaky injector, so it means it was letting fuel get past it, so it washed out one of the cylinders. So therefore, the only way to fix it is rebuild the motor or replace it. It costs you eighty-eight, eighty-eight sixty for a new motor to be put in it, that's parts and labor. To take that one out, rebuild it, and hope it works is ninety-four ninety, and for them to tear it apart and see if that's actually what caused it, it'd be about nine hundred bucks. I said, just don't touch it, so.
What is it? What, what is the gator, Bob? I mean, is it a twenty-twelve?
Twenty-twenty-one. Oh, yeah, we just got paid off last year. It has four hundred hours, that's why I said.
And I'm only asking, we, the John Deere dealership that took it in the same place we bought it?
Yes.
And they're not willing to.
They said the warranty's out, John Deere will not cover it.
So they, what, what is it exactly? Twenty-twenty-one, I'm, I know.
It's a twenty-twenty-one XUV five-nine-zero Amazon Mary. Four-wheel drive, has the roof, it's still great shape, it's just.
It's absolutely useful, and the electric department uses it too, when you'll spray down.
And just so I don't double do anything you might have done, did you happen to call, like, Claycomb?
I, no, I just got back from John Deere, and I hadn't printed out the paperwork that says what it costs, because the two new plugs that I just put in, one of them was black. So that'd be the cylinder that's got blow by for fuel, which he said, once that injector leaks, it washes all the lining off the, and then the rings wear the, so.
And.
So that comes down to like fifteen hours a month usage. I said, you're telling me for nineteen thousand or seventeen, well, I think we paid fourteen thousand when we bought it, but one just like that, they still make that model, I checked that wise, there was nineteen thousand plus. One year, one year, you get a one-year warning.
Do you want to try to call, I think we need to look around, obviously we gotta have something.
Oh, yeah, I'm gonna have to.
I don't think nineteen thousand's in our budget.
No.
But like, you gonna, oh, do you wanna, do you wanna call, like, Mike Claycomb?
Yeah, I'm gonna have to call several places, just to get an idea of what it costs, so, 'cause I looked at the paper they gave me, they're saying their cost was six thousand seven hundred or something for the motor, and then two thousand and seventy just to swap. So, at least I know, you know, how much I'm getting, maybe we can get a motor cheaper, but buying a new motor, it comes with a warning, them rebuilding it, it's got like a thirty-day warning, well, I'm not doing that again. You proved your track record's pretty shitty, so, pretty crappy.
That's terrible.
It is.
Place come over, Greg Gay, he works on a lot of stuff, I don't know if Tom will work on a junk gear or not.
No. They would, but it would be expensive.
I think Claycomb's one small engine guy that I know that's my team, is reasonable on four-wheelers and all the other stuff, he's reasonable, but I don't know. But it'd just give you an option of something like.
Claycomb's performance.
I've got a couple guys that do that, I'm gonna check with, but we got all the trees down that had died, that were limbs falling out of, we just took the big one down there by the shop, because it was dead, it had a lot of hollow in the center, so, that was really bothering me, 'cause it, but we took a lot of grief doing it, everybody stopped by, oh, that's a limb, it's dangerous, oh, yeah, so.
We used to go up there to get away from the teacher.
Yeah, it's just, it was dangerous, so, they've got the tree down, you still gotta come back and do the stump and all that, but.
Oh, there you go, I thought there might be some.
Last one, you're lucky.
So, with that said, this transfer that I'm gonna have to do, I put a thousand on here, I took, when I pay insurance at the beginning of the year, it comes out of several different places, and one of them is Town Council Insurance, I'm supposed to, here's a three thousand dollar, well, I picked the wrong account, I picked Bob's account, so now I need to move that money back down, because insurance was paid in January, and I'm looking at the thing, and I'm like, I don't guess I've got enough insurance line, well, because I took it from Bob's. 'Cause they're right, they're right beside you, yes, and he, it's his equipment and train, and, so I need to move that money back to him, so that he can.
You, you guys know that if each one of you gave up two thousand dollars of your salary, I could get that fixed today.
We'll get right on that.
Yeah, I figured though.
Can I ask you back with this meeting?
I've been told no before.
I was gonna say, just ask him by the set around, is money just gonna happen like?
Yeah, I, well, I figured it'd kinda fall out of the sky when I was sitting there, but it did.
I made a motion to approve moving the minute, or moving the money from TC Insurance back to where, to Park.
I second. All in favor?
Aye. All opposed?
Yeah, you just, you all sign that when you sign, on the left hand side. All right, I got that little spreadsheet, sorry. I told you tonight was gonna be rough, did I not?
Am I dumb?
No. Well, wait a minute, I don't know, yeah, you are done, yeah, you are, you are done.
Yeah, you are mine.
Yeah, I was waiting, I was gonna go with it, yes, you are.
Yes, you will get seven.
Show your thing, too, Bob.
Well, you ain't got no food at home, you gotta go get it. One more?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. This is a matrix, um, every year, before you guys did your different salaries last year, and I don't remember Jeremy and Jennifer, I don't think so, but the towns always have, the council had what's called a matrix, okay? The matrix then, Nicole's familiar, 'cause the county does this, and we brought this up, nobody likes to decide if you're gonna give a raise or not give a raise, this doesn't mean you have to give a raise, this is just information purposes only, okay? So they didn't wanna decide, you know, what's two, what's three, what's four percent, all right? So one of the things that could die, that was one of this job with Brian, Brian wanted, I guess for your profit, though, guarantees you a higher than a five percent, that's, I know, that shocked me, too. I go, what? He, that's what that guy said, they will guarantee on a new, if you get hired late in, they guarantee a five percent rate.
One time?
No.
Every year?
That's in his contract.
How can you do that?
I don't, I was like, where's he working at? CEO?
Oh, CEO.
So, I, I shocked me, 'cause I, I mean, I dealt with profits a lot in the county, but like, just take mine across there.
They're not union, are they?
I don't know.
I don't think they are.
If you take mine across there, my current pace there, if it's a four percent, well, you can see my current, twenty-twenty-five, four percent would be that, that's the difference between my salaries, so twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty, twenty-nine, the second line's a three percent, that's what, that's the difference between it, okay? The third line's a two percent. I went down and I did that for each, like, Brian is the next one, so you can get an idea what percentage, you don't have to decide this percentage, or you may decide nothing, I don't know, but I wanted you to have something in front of you that's actual numbers, rather than going, oh, what's, you know, to say, oh, I'm gonna get four percent, well, if you go to Brian to get four, I mean, that's, you gotta know what you're doing. This was Jason's salary, so I just, I just wanna put him in there. Uh, this is Michelle, she's part-time, that's what she makes an hour, that's what it would be for hers. Your part-time employees are all fifteen, sixteen, and out, Bob will be going to part-time, you will no longer have that contract, so he will be going to part-time, twenty-twenty-six, 'cause I was gonna put some of that. Mike's part-time, his part-time person up there at the park, and Phil Mahoy, he just knows the electric plant, I don't know what he did, that's what Kevin and Shelby make, this is what you guys make. I put Wayntown and Ladoga on there, because we just got these comparisons, I just got them, um, and these are, these are what their people make in these same positions. The only problem, like, with Brian's, Wayntown doesn't have linemen, okay? Ladoga doesn't have linemen. They have a huge contract with Inba, I mean, a huge contract with Inba, I was like, oh my God. So, I couldn't get you numbers on that, what they have are maintenance workers in their town that are full-time employees, so they average around fifty-six, fifty-eight, depending some amounts on longevity, you know, so they do all the things, like, they'll read the meters, but they don't do electrical, but the streets, the mowing, the, you wanna be, I guess they are probably what Phil was back in the day, something like that. So just take that with you, I will need to know, um, where is this August? Right around October, I'll need to know what reports are, so we'll keep it on old business, but if you just, if you want me to put a different percentage in there, I can, I don't, I mean, I just thought those were the pretty standard percentages. All right, and if you have any other information, just reach out, um, but, gives you an idea, okay? So, there's really, I'll keep that on old business.
Yes, please.
Okay. All right, so there's nothing else on, Brian covered the storm drains, uh, Bob.
Co-ed league.
So we started a co-ed league up at the park, it started Sunday, uh, Jay Sims reached out to Bob, he's already paid the town his fifteen percent of the sixteen that started, just so you know, they already brought that in, I still gotta get listen, Josh, it's, but, um, I just did it, I didn't have this at your last meeting, so it happened between your last meeting and now, but why would we turn down money, right? Tracy was already under the same lease, I called Tyler, is she, her lease is the whole entire year, so she's gonna pay you, um, you know, the ten dollars, and then each time, or whatever. The only problem Jeremy and Jennifer is the festival, she will have games on that Sunday, so her stuff's gonna be in the concessions, too, I'm not using it. Okay, why didn't your Legion use it? I thought they'd be able to use it.
I'll have everything, I, if she has some stuff, I might have to, like, I'll grab stuff from the freezer at the Legion, and it won't, I won't leave anything in there overnight, it'll just be.
Do you just need fridge space or the fridge jager too?
Yeah, no, just freezer.
Oh, that'll be fine, because.
Yeah, I was the one who used the fridge last year.
We don't have a ton in the freezer at all, because it's just on Sundays only.
If I need anything, I'm gonna have a refrigerator, it would be one box of, uh, hot dogs.
We'll just make sure there's some space in that one to make, so that, 'cause everyone's loaded with pop and bateray, but that would be the only thing, all right? But, uh, it went well Sunday, didn't it, Bob, there was a lot of people there, so, um, Bob actually under, well, we didn't, because we're on that, but, yeah, we got Crawfordville team, so, anyhow.
Yeah, we had, we had three people, three teams sign up here, and four sign up in Crawfordville, so after we talked to all the teams, we have six at Darnington and nine at Crawfordville, so.
We're hoping to get, yeah, and encourage some adult leagues.
And that upset them, so I said, just wait, I'm gonna take your women and your men's leagues next year, so.
hoping to get a whole writing for them, so.
Sweet, do we need to?
Yes, I'm sorry, you will sign this, and I, and again, the project just came up in between your guys' time, so, and you can do it when we sign all of this, so you go ahead.
Do I need to make?
Yeah, let's, let's just go with Jason's, run them up a little bit, thank you.
That's what I need to say, Jason's.
I'll make a motion for Jason's run a co-ed league.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
All right. Um, there's nothing on the form one unless you guys had, if you don't have any, it's okay, unless you have any questions, but I handed all those form ones to you, okay? And, um, I gave in your stack, you have something that looks like this, uh.
Okay, so I wasn't here, is this, the special meeting was set last, this last Saturday?
This is the meeting I'm set with the DLGF guy, so, public hearing will be September fourth, this is your local council meeting.
Okay.
You will adopt it September eighteenth, that is a Thursday, you just come in and Dr. Bud, you are able to discuss anything that comes up, or whatever, you know.
Sure.
But, in some examples, we. Yeah, this is just budget, this is our budget for twenty-twenty-six, not really anything, our general's a little higher, because our CCD, our CCI has to go lower.
Okay.
It's because we had a higher budget this year, and they assume we're gonna use that, and at this rate, we probably won't.
Yeah.
But that's what it is, and this public notice, I don't have to, but I put it here, I put it post office, and I have it down there, definitely you run Department of Public Government and state, but I feel like we're a small town, it needs to be there, so, so that's that, I don't think we need to do that one yet, and do you want me to reach out to this contractor in this legislature, or what do you want me to do on that? Just let it say the word written on her? This one or not?
Okay.
I know, I hate to pull that.
Don't give her some, we have, we have a new move to check on.
Absolutely. Um, okay, I don't have it on yet.
Um, did you get with Kevin?
I'm getting Ryan's bill.
Okay.
I will, yeah. Are you having people have to pay in the bill, okay? I know you have probably.
We're so low.
Our body has come in and.
They're okay, yeah, all right.
So we're down the new with.
Yep. I need a motion to pass, um, eighteen dollars and ninety cents for Mike Smith for his mileage, I know.
A second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
It's gonna go in one place.
I can't give, I'm like, I thought you was gonna take me out for a sandwich.
I'm supposed to do it, he had.
Why, that ain't, that ain't enough for two sandwiches, Sam.
I was gonna say, I don't think that would agree with it.
I'm cheap, I'll just take a sandwich from McDonald's. I need a motion to pass the tracking factor for October, November, December, all rates for tracking factor, that should be zero point zero 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 one zero nine three.
Make a motion for that number.
Shoot, I can't repeat that.
All opposed?
All in favor?
All in favor, yes. All opposed?
Royce Foster, uh, will want to put a dumpster out in front of his house, um, it may be around October or so, he's cleaning it out, I imagine he's probably, it's just too much house for him. He doesn't have an exact date, he lives right here on Madison, he, he said it won't be there for more than two days, and, um, I just wanted to write.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
And, do you have the billing message in front of you, or the billing report?
That is.
Yeah, there it is. I didn't disconnect because of the heat, obviously, so.
I have a question. A simple question, but I'm so tired, and I shouldn't even look at it, but it's like, it's like a dumpster, it's like a dumpster fire, what, what is our rate?
Point one eight one, fourteen cents.
Fourteen cents.
You put that on there.
Who put that, you put that, I can't find it on.
She put it in Pam's, she looked it up.
And she's like, don't you be answering, I said.
We were cheap with anybody else. We were cheaper than anybody else.
We are.
Yeah, we are, we are, I just get, I just wanna have.
I can't find it again.
I just want, and, and my question is, because I want, like, to be transparent, because I'm sure it's on the record, and I maybe should already know this, but if we're charging them, what are we paying?
You mean for Inba?
Yes.
I couldn't quote you that right now, I'd have to give a bill of credit back, I don't, because it's not just, well, we don't just pay Inba for the total one hour. You have a tracking factor, tracking factor is your fuel surcharge, which changes every three months.
It'll never be the same.
Yeah, I'll practice it down for that.
As a rule, um, I know we don't, I know we've talked about it before, and we do not mark up our electric, probably here what we should, what we should, to try to generate some income.
We pay them sometime, like, I can tell you what we pay Inba monthly, like, I can print a report for that, but to break it down per individual, I'm not, I'm not sure.
I'm not, I'm not even individual, but like, this is for instance. We, we took in two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, one hundred and seventy-eight dollars and fifteen cents.
No, we bill two ninety-one, seven seventeen.
We bill. But that includes wastewater, trash, I'm just talking about electric.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, we bill that.
So.
You wanna know what we pay?
And you won't know, like, did we, no, did we, did we pay, I'm, I'm just numbers here, because I'm, what I'm trying to get at is, is so I can be like, listen, people, this is what we pay, we, we mark it up point five percent, what, whatever the markup is, so if we, if we billed two hundred and seventy, just say, two hundred and seventy thousand, did we pay two hundred and fifty thousand for that, did we create two hundred and sixty-nine thousand for that?
Actually, I was, I know it's gonna shock you, but I have a spreadsheet. I have one every month that says, here's what we billed, here's what we collected, here's what we paid Inba, and here's the difference.
That's what I would live.
I will print that out for you, or I can send it to you, and you have, if ever you want that in your wallet.
I won't, I just wanna, because I wanna be able, I wanna be able to say, and maybe it's not the cheapest place in the world to live, but I wanna take, I literally wanna take a picture of the Inba book that has all the towns we buy with, that try to buy cheaper, like, listen, don't tell me that Wayntown's that much cheaper, don't tell me Jamestown or Lisbon, because we buy it at the same rate.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah. No, no, I know, well, let me tell you this, too, though. I will tell you this, when you see this spreadsheet, though, I'm gonna give you an example, because this is what people don't even take into mind, okay? So you're gonna look at, let's say, February, and it's gonna have, it, it's probably gonna have negative, it's gonna have a negative, it'll look like you lost money, okay? Because we are losing money, anyway, anybody who's on community action, from October to, all the way to March sixteenth, don't have to pay. We have to pay, we have to pay a hundred percent out. Then you'll see in March and April, you'll see this phenomenal number.
I get that, I'm looking at.
So, but most people don't.
What I'm looking at, or wanting, like, listen, we, we rate, we upcharge two percent of what we pay, so we're paying, I'm just throwing numbers. We're paying twelve cents a kilowatt hour, you're paying us fourteen cents a kilowatt hour, and that two cents is what pays Brian, and whoever Brian's helper is.
Well, it's a fuel surcharge.
I get, I get that, too, but, you know, but for other people that don't obviously understand it, or get it, or don't want to, that's real numbers, like, here's, this is it in black and white right here, people, it's, you can think we're doing, uh, you know, whatever, whatever, but this is, this is it.
You know, I did it in eighteen, when we were in Great Bay last year, and he got super offended, and I'll say it, I was scratching together, and I said, he goes, your electric company only clears almost twenty-four thousand dollars a year, four hundred dollars a month. That pays for zero, when you have salaries, you have insurance, you have maintenance, that covers all the equipment, the supplies. I said, he goes, that is not right, and I'm like, okay, well, then you go, and he came back, and he's like, okay, we're only, we're only clearing about twenty-four. It was like, and then it got about, the highest it got was thirty-two thousand dollars. Thirty-two thousand dollars for an electric department, with two full-time employees, plus every expense you had out there. That's when they changed the thing, and Inba came, and we didn't charge five dollars a meter, we had no service meter. Yeah, and you're like, why do you not have a flat five dollars for a meter? Because we didn't have anybody to replace that meter, so we put a five-dollar meter charge in there. That's when things started changing, and we hadn't had a rate increase since two thousand and eighteen, and, or no, two thousand and eight.
Well, that's a whole other thing, we have, we have, we have to raise a little bit every year, and it's a percent.
Exactly, exactly.
And, and, and it's, and, you know, people get mad about that, and they're like, what, what's the town board doing? Well, we don't wanna pay any, we live here, we, we don't wanna pay anymore, but this is, this is the reality, it's just what, it has to happen.
I really thought what was on that, on Facebook, that one about, we're the cheapest one, and about in the county, that we pay for a kilowatt, even Crawfordville.
But people don't look, when they're looking at the bill, they're looking at their total, they're not looking at.
They're looking at the total.
But that's, I can bring, I can, I can send that to you, I can send it to all of you, it won't completely be, because we don't, Inba bills almost two months behind, so you'll see where there's an Inba, there's like a blank space right there of what we pay down.
I would like to see it, and only because then I have real numbers when people are, I don't feel, what happens, just saying.
No, no, you do, yeah.
This is black and white, right here, but this is what it is.
Yeah, just to count. Hey, you're good. When you see how much we pay Inba, my bill maker's done it.
Well, all I hope is, it's less than that number right here, the bill, what we bill.
It is, Mike, are you guys on tip-mot? Are you, yeah, because I lived outside of Wingate for a while.
I know, Michelle's like, I know what anybody's complaining about.
I was gonna say, I lived outside of Wingate for a little bit before our house was ready, and, um, my living room was not fun, and I didn't run anything.
Marilyn, do you have anything for, now, like, Jennifer?
I do not.
Thank you for doing that.
So, Jeremy?
Getting mad. Uh, no, ma'am.
Teresa?
Hello?
I have nothing. And our next meeting, September fourth, five p.m., do I have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
My second.
All in favor? All opposed?
You guys are gonna be my first and second, come on, we just kinda, because I've got on.
Video.
Video.
Just second.
And cut.
Check the video.
Check.